All right, we'll call to order the special committee of the whole meeting for Monday, November 8th. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller? Crisato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly? Chantet? Sofa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Saron? And vocal singer?
Here.
We have 10 out of 14.
And I did hear from Alderman Connolly and Saron and Chantet that all won't be here. And hopefully Tom will sometime tell us what happened today.
Yes.
It's good news.
Very much.
Very good news. Okay, up next would be reminder to speak directly in the microphone for the recording and broadcast this evening. And then item number three is items to be removed, added, or changed, anything?
No.
Okay. We'll move right then to matters from the public. Is there anybody online?
There is not.
There is not, okay. We have nobody in the audience and nobody online for our first budget meeting other than us.
Right.
Okay. Discussion. 2022 budget. Peggy? Floor, the screens, everything's yours.
Hello? Can I just click on it? Yeah. It's on Chrome.
It's on Chrome, yeah. Yep. And there it is online.
Okay.
Perfect.
Well, as all of you may know, I'm going to go ahead and take my mask off since there are very many people in here and they're... Except now you're within six feet.
Can you move the cursor and click? Your view? The left two from there.
Yep, right there.
Perfect. Thank you, Peggy.
Okay, so we have new budget software that we purchased this last year and it's got some really great features that I'm going to show you tonight. Rather than have a presentation, I'm going to go through the numbers on the web document. We are moving towards this rather than having printed copies. We still will have to have some hard copies to be able to provide entities that need a printed copy. But in general, we will be using the electronic version of everything. So I know it came out late on Friday and don't know if very many people have had a chance to go through it. Whoops, that is not the right scrolling. Apologize. I'll just start out with going through the different tabs and showing everyone how...what's included here. So we have a transmit a letter. This is all basic structure of how the city works, the organization chart of the city, the fund structure, our processes and our policies. The overview is not as extensive as it has been in past years because I just didn't have time to do it. Working late till after midnight, many nights trying to get it done and it just...there was no way to get all the more detail done in time for you. I keep hitting that side button, I apologize. But if questions come up, I can certainly provide answers at any time on information here. And we'll come back and go through the overview later. Some of these forms that we have here were pre-set up by ClearGov. That's the company that we're using. They had something called priorities and issues, so I just went through some of the main things that I thought were issues for us with our budget. And then fund summaries is just what it says, a summary of revenues and expenditures without the detail. So if you want to see just a quick view of our general fund or all of the other funds, you can go here for all the funds put together. There's probably more information than what people really want to see, but what's nice is you can just pick and choose what it is that you're interested in reviewing. Funding sources are just revenues. What I had here was just the revenues for the all funds and then the general fund. And then right before coming tonight, I added this section called other revenues because a question came up, what is in the other revenue category? So this provides that detail, which by the way, other revenues is mostly debt issuance and investment income.
Can I break in real quick, Peggy?
Yes.
Just wanted to let Jenny know that Alderman Miller arrived at 7:06 for the record. Thank you.
And then we have all of our budgets by department. And what this includes is a summary of revenues and expenditures by the whole fund and then individual departments. You'll want to click on the down or the side arrow to get down to the different departments in the general fund. The one thing I found is that the scroll bar on the side is rather thin, so it's not always easy to grab. But this will provide the detailed information by department within the general fund and then within all of the other funds as well. And then one of the great features with the budget this year is the capital improvements program that we're able to provide, provides a lot of information. We can look at it. The one-year plan is what you'll be approving in the budget. All of the out-years you are not approving, it just shows what the plans are for presenting to the city council in future years. And the multi-year plan does change. Things come up. Utilities discover things that need to get done, so they are bumped up on the priority list. So the multi-year plan isn't something that always stays the same. In fact, it won't. It definitely changes from time to time.
Is that kind of the appendices in the back that can...
In the old...yes. In the former book, it looked like this and that was all of these...we did it in Excel and it was Excel spreadsheets. Yep. So having the software summarize it is very nice. You can see here it...this is...so we have 34, almost 35 million in capital projects that have a detailed sheet, but we have about 38 million in total capital because there's TIF proj...or TIF funds that have on-plan projects, but we have to have some kind of amount set aside, but it doesn't lend itself to doing a capital sheet on it because we don't have any details on it. But what's nice is you can go in here and see it by funding source. That was another question that we had. How do you see what's funding our capital projects? And here you can see we've got 5.6 million in grants, 7.4 million in utility fund reserves, and then some MFT funds and debt issuance. And you can scroll down and then you can see it by department. So you can click on any one of these and go to the detail on that capital project. And then you can just click the back arrow or I think if you go up to the top, you can get back to the other departments. But it's really nice to be able to go in and see all of those capital projects at a glance or in detail. And then the multi-year plan, we have almost 160 million in capital projects planned for the next five years, the majority of that being the wastewater treatment plant. But again, you can go down and then it will have all of the itemized requests for 22 to 26. But especially for all the new council members, you're only approving what's in the 2022 budget. Has anyone had a chance to look at this software?
I was going to say that looking at that, when I browsed through that today, I think that's going to be wonderful for the public to be able to see and use because it's so simple to jump between those or to look at the dollar amounts, where they came from on those charts and the graphs because it's so simple and easy to find. It's not buried in 300 pages of a document that's in a book down at City Hall or scrolling page after page after page after page.
Right, you can go right to the capital improvements plan. And then we also will be adding a feature shortly that will have a map. So they'll be able to go to the website and click on the map to see which projects may be around their home or business.
And it's not like the information wasn't always there.
Right.
It was just a lot harder to find and this I think will make it a lot easier for people to see the transparency that we put out every time we have a budget go out. I'm really happy with it.
Yeah, I really was very happy with the capital improvements plan. We were also able to use customized forms for...one for vehicles or buildings that could get different information rather than just using one generic form. So that was nice as well.
You might want to change the view back to gallery now.
I see Mark has his hand up already.
And that way you'll be able to see if hands are raised.
Okay.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, Peggy, the question about being able to see...I know I can drill into each project and see what the funding source is, but having a spreadsheet or something that says here's all the projects for this year and here's their funding source at a glance would be a lot easier than having to let me check that project, let me check that project one by one. That's kind of what I was looking for, if that's available.
You mean other than...oh, you wanted a list of each project?
Yeah, each project and their funding source. I love the fact that there's the graphs and shows the different funding sources, but then I've got to click into each project to find out, well, how's this funded? How's this funded? And I think that would be helpful for us as well as the public.
Okay, all right. That would have to be something that we create and insert in here.
Okay.
But we should be able to do that. I'll have to look into it.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it.
But again, you can click on...well, I guess no, you can't. I thought it might bring up the projects. It did not. It...
Yeah, that's what I was hoping. I clicked on that earlier and I'm like, dang it, it doesn't do that. And that's what I was hoping I would be able to see.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Well, the majority, I can tell you for...until we get that done, the debt issuance is the One Washington Place project debt of 16 million and the other balance is for IEPA loans for the water treatment plant and for the lead services abatement. It's listed as debt, but it's forgivable debt. We'll fund that project and then the state of Illinois will reimburse us and we do not have to pay that back. So that was wonderful that we received that grant for that. And then some of the other funding sources, if it says capital fund reserves, that means it's being funded in one way or another through the general fund. And utility fund reserves means water, electric, or sewer. If it says general fund reserves, that means it actually is budgeted in the general fund. We usually don't have a lot of projects budgeted in the general fund, but there are sometimes...usually they are IT projects. Rebuild Illinois is the money that we are getting incrementally over three years. The state issued debt and they're paying us over three years. We have to use it just like motor fuel tax funds and get approval through IDOT for those funds. So we will go back to fund summaries. We can talk about all funds budget, but it really doesn't mean anything because it's just adding everything together and lumping it in. Everything comes down to the fund. We had economic development sub-fund in the general fund for a grant for our largest electric user. It's still here because of the history of prior years, but there's nothing budgeted in '22 because it will be done in '21. So the general fund is the main operating fund of the city. And we were very pleased, we've been very pleased with our revenues as they've been coming in in 2021 compared to 2020. We actually were seeing some very nice increases in our sales tax revenues related to, I'm sure, getting back out and spending in, you know, after COVID somewhat, if I can say after COVID. But also because of the change in the level of the playing field act that requires retailers to pay sales tax to us. So that has made a difference in our revenues for the general fund. So sales tax is our main source, then property tax. Municipal taxes and fees are comprised of various revenues, waste transfer station, telecom tax. But we have a nice boost in revenues for 2022. I wanted to point out this expenditure by function because it shows a negative, especially for some of the new council members. What that represents is a transfer from the electric, water, and sewer utilities for their share of general fund expenses. The utilities don't have an HR department, they don't have a finance department, and they don't have a legal department, so they contribute towards the cost of those items in the general fund. And that's reviewed every year. Sometimes it is adjusted because of if we have a utility that's doing a lot of debt issuance, then we increase those costs because we know we're going to be spending more time on those utilities for items like that. This used to be reported as revenue in the general fund, but accounting rules changed maybe 10...eight to 10 years ago to make it a negative expense. So in the fund summary, it just shows the expenditures by department. If you wanted to see the details behind this, you would go over to the departments tab at the top. But we have 31 million budgeted for the general fund for 2022. Administration includes other departments just because it got so long and it's just grouping. In administration, we have HR, IT, finance, and utility billing included in there, but the expenses of those departments are also broken out individually in the department budgets. So this also gives you a summary of the general categories, 15.9 million in salaries. You can see how that comprises the majority of those. One thing that's a little different that this I see as a shortfall in this software is they don't have a nice...these are your revenues, these are expenses, this is your difference, your surplus or your deficit, and then your fund balance. We have to manually enter the fund balance, so if we change the budget, I have to manually go in and do the calculations and change it in the software. So I've already put in a request that that should be a basic statement that they provide to all of their customers. So hopefully they will get that corrected. But we had a nice boost to our fund balance, which changed our outlook from last year because we received the CARES Act funding of 1.6 million. Now, the ARPA funds I mentioned in my overview, we are not recording in the general fund. It's sitting on the balance sheet. We've received half this year, 1.8 million, and so it's sitting there in there as a deferred revenue until the projects move forward and it will be recognized as revenue then. So there is some grant revenue budgeted for the drainage fund, which is where those funds will be spent for 2022. And then as long as we're talking about, I'm going to go over to the projections. I'm going to hit that one more time. So this is just a chart of wages across to all funds and benefits, but I wanted to go down to the general fund projections. Tomorrow night, we will be presenting the tax levies for you to consider. The budget does not include any increase to the tax rate for property taxes for next year, just a small increase to capture the new growth. The estimated EAV has 17 million in expected new construction value added to our EAV for next year. So that provides about 238,000 in revenue. One of the things that we were asked last week was to provide projections out five years for salary and wages, so that's what this is. Abby Beck pointed out a formula error on this right as I was coming up to the podium, but I was able to quickly change out this chart so that now it reflects the correct...it was a number across instead of the actual formula for this middle section right here. But these projections are based on the way we are right now, the employees we have right now. We've not included any new employees in the projections that we may request to add in future years, except for the GIS position that's been asked for in this budget is included in the projections here.
Alderman Uwer has a hand raised.
Okay, I'm not used to looking at that.
That's all right.
Thanks for pointing it out.
Sure.
Please go ahead.
It does raise my hand, so it's not like I've been waiting forever. So does the salary projections there, that's union and non-union, right?
Yes.
Is there a breakdown of that?
Not in...not in the chart, no, because they're all estimates because nothing's been approved for non-union or union at this point, so it's just an estimate.
Okay. Is there something...is in the software, does it break that out if you choose to?
Not with the version we have this year. They hadn't finished their personnel budgeting module by the time we needed to get started, so we have had to do everything by hand this year.
Okay.
But next year, we should have many more features for salaries and wages.
Okay.
But I have those numbers because we did have to calculate it, so I can provide that out. But again, it's just an estimate because they haven't gone through union negotiations, so...
All right, I think I was just based on last week's discussion, I was just more interested in seeing what it would look like on the non-union wages and the pay grade changes that were proposed.
We did do a calculation for just those few pay grade changes and have that for you for tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we will have that. Was that the only question?
Yeah, that was it, thank you.
All right, sure. And then this chart just goes over the surplus and reserves. The software uses the term fund balance. Many cities just report their fund balance, but I go in and report spendable fund balance because we take in money from...for the Park District and the School District, and sometimes those balances can go high, but it's not our money to spend. We're holding it for them for land cash. And so we also hold escrows for developers that aren't spendable or budgeted, so I take that out because it can be misleading and look like you have more funds available than you really do. I like to show that it's the amount that's available for spending here. So all of our major funds meet our fund balance policy. And as I said earlier, our fund balance for the general fund was boosted because of the CARES Act money.
Peggy, what was our estimated days of operation with the 2021 budget? What were we expected to be?
Let me look.
Is it like 132?
Page 17.
Lauren knows the page number.
Wow.
It's just one I refer to a lot.
I think it was like 132.
Oh, is it 132?
Oh, I was going to guess in the 1...
It might be higher than that.
I was going to guess in the 140s.
Maybe 147.
I was thinking 140s. 140s?
Maybe it was 132 the year before.
It was 144.
So we grew our reserves again.
Which is not unexpected given the amount of that CARES Act funding that we received.
Had we not received that, we would have had deficit spending.
Right.
As we had planned and thought we would for 2021.
And how much do you think that would have been again? I'm sorry, I forgot how much that offset.
The deficit that was expected was... 1.7 million.
Okay, so we got the 1.7 to get that. So had we not gotten that, we would have gone into our reserves 1.7 million.
The CARES Act funding that we received was 1.554 million and then the other adjustments would be differences in revenues and expenditures at the time we did the budget because we aren't through with this year yet and things can still change. You know, there's not a lot of time left in the year, but the estimates do change because sometimes departments think they're going to get to something still before the end of the year and then they just aren't able to. And then this is a 10-year projection. Not anything based on complete accuracy, but it gives you an idea of where we would be if nothing changed. One of the things that we have a 27th payroll every 11 years, so we always want to make sure that we're aware of that and planning for it because it does add to spending in that year. But because of our reserves, we are not needing new revenue now, maybe until 2025. And that's showing if we implemented an additional half percent on our home real sales tax. So that's something that we will want to keep in mind as we move through the budget because it's my understanding that the council is...would rather do something like that than property tax because property tax would have to be incremental rather than all at once. But that's something for a future discussion, not something that we have to act on with this budget. But one of the things that I did bring up in the priorities and issue is thinking about the unfunded projects that Gary Holm presented to you earlier this year. And one of the ways that you could fund some of those projects is through incremental increases to property tax. So that may be something that you would want to consider. And also, we had the two large drainage projects for Carriage Crest and for Mahoney Creek or over by Fermilab. It's been called two different names, but over on the east side. So with the ARPA funding, we still...right now, the estimates are that we'll be about $1 million short for construction of Carriage Crest. So we could issue an installment loan if we wanted. It wouldn't make sense really to issue bonds for being $1 million short because... It wouldn't make sense really to issue bonds for being a million dollars short because of the cost. But we could use reserves, which would bring us, you know, to that sixty-day level sooner. Or we could implement small property tax increases to fund that. So that's just something to think about for those projects. And then I also mentioned here the wastewater treatment plant. That was something that was a very large surprise as far as the expected cost of that project overall. Not for this next phase, this next phase, the cost is right around where we were expecting it to be and we were planning for it for rate increases. But they've implemented a phase two, two A and two B. Two A is the one that will start, that they're starting to design now or will be. And two B has changed tremendously in cost. And so that's something that Trotter is going to come and, and present. And Gary or Laura could probably add more on that if you have questions on that. But it will impact our wastewater rates. Unfortunately, we, we can borrow thirty years through an IAPA loan. So we could reduce our payments for the amount that we would need in those future years. But I'm not sure that it would be worth it. We'll have to evaluate it at that time, you know, to get that extra ten years if it was worth, if it would be worth it to pay that additional interest for that time period.
Alderman, your, your hand is up. Do you have another question?
Oh, sorry, Chris.
Oh, that's alright.
I have one question while we're here. Peggy and we're talking about small incremental increases in the property tax. If we were to go up a penny at a time on the rate, what does that equate to? Like with our current EAV, how much, how much revenue would that equate to if we want a penny up on the rate? What are we at, seventy?
I put in here that if we were to levy, and if we were to levy over two years, that would be five hundred thousand. And I think that was four cents.
Was four cents? Okay. Was, was how many hundred thousand a year?
That was five hundred thousand. I think it was between four and five cents. But we could, we could, I could calculate out what a penny would be.
Like a hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue for every penny we were to raise the rate?
Yes.
Okay. And that's kind of what I wanted to talk about because I think that's something I've tried to bring up every year for the past several years and never gotten anywhere with the fact that nobody wants to raise taxes. But the penny on the rate, how much does that equate to on a three hundred thousand dollar house? If we do that at one, one a year? Or how much does that, and then how much does that affect our revenue if we do that? So we get an idea if we were to do something like that, what the results would be, both on the tax bill and on our revenue side.
Right. So we don't need it for operations right now. But if you wanted to set aside funding for a future project or for Carriage Crest, that might be something that you might want to consider. And I can, I'll, I'll go through those numbers in the morning and, and bring those tomorrow night when I have the tax levy ordinances for you. And one thing I didn't put on this priorities and issues section because it's not an issue, but the water rates are also increased with this budget, three percent. That has an impact on the average user of it, one dollar a month. Whereas the, or the sewer rates are about three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Actually, I think water might be a dollar twenty per month. And then the electric utility does not have a rate increase at this time. There are still sufficient reserves in the electric utility. But we're not really sure how things will go next year as far as energy prices and the impact of the legislation. We just aren't sure. And so we may need to address that sometime next year, looking, looking at maybe electric rate increase.
And the last time rates were arranged, were raised was 2015?
Yes. So it has been a very long time. We have had decreasing costs at Prairie State. So we've had an energy cost adjustment that we've actually been receiving rebates on for bills that we've paid in past years. They do reconciliation each month on that.
The last time electric rates were raised was 2015?
Yes.
How about water and sewer?
Water and sewer have been increased for, since 2015 for sure. I have a history that I can provide because we knew that they were, both those utilities were facing large capital projects. And because, you know, our revenues are, for the wastewater are only six million a year. When you need to fund eighty million, it takes a while to get the rates where you need them to be. The water utility has the water treatment plant rehabilitation project that it started this year. But we've also replaced several water mains in conjunction with the sewer, the sewer separation project and the stormwater projects because it just didn't make sense. We knew that the water mains were very old, that were in those areas and were tearing it out. So it, it only made sense to also replace the water mains at that time. But I can get you what the history of those increases are.
Chairman Wolf, at what point would you like to pause?
I, I was just gonna say, is this a good time to stop? If we could stop and do the public hearing for that special service area and then have that done and over with and we can go back to the budget?
Oh. There is not a public hearing on this meeting.
There is.
Not on the budget?
Not on the budget.
This is on something totally separate.
It was just noticed.
That got noticed for today, so we had to include that in our meeting tonight.
Oh, for, for my SSA public hearing? Okay, sorry.
No.
I could swear I had it on tomorrow.
I'm sorry, that was meant to do.
It's Scott.
Your public.
This is my hearing.
Your public hearing is for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
So we can do that. It is past seven thirty-five, so we're okay. We'll call to order the public hearing for the special service area fifty-six for the Fox Valley Industrial Park subdivision and Fox Valley Business Park re-subdivision. Okay. Scott, do you want to make any comments on this one?
Um, yeah, this is a special service area that we tried to create years ago when we did the re-subdivision. But due to not getting it recorded in time, it did not stick as a special service area. So we are going back and redoing this. In this case, we are including the other properties in the Fox Valley Business Park because we only included the ones that were in the re-subdivision. So this is including all the properties. And this is a backup SSA, so there would be no levy for this. It would only be in the case that the property ownership, the Property Owners Association does not maintain the detention basin, that we would activate it and impose a levy. So this would not have any tax effect on the property owners. It would just put into place a special service area that we intended to almost ten years ago now.
And then the ordinance for this that we had a week ago Monday, that'll actually be on our next council meeting?
That'll be on Monday's council meeting, correct.
And do we have to have a public hearing at that meeting as well?
No, this is the public hearing for that.
Okay, so then it'll just be a regular agenda item?
Correct, yes.
Okay, is there anybody online or in the room that wants to speak on this?
There's no one online.
Okay, we do have somebody in the, in the audience behind you that would like to speak. If you want to come up and use the microphone here, all we need is your name.
Good evening, my name's Tim Ward. And I'm, I'm the owner of the Prairie Path Business Park, original developer as well. I've gotten a lot of phone calls in the last ten days or so from the other property owners. They were, there's a lot of concern being expressed about increases in property taxes, as I'm sure you can imagine of anybody. So I have a list here of a couple of questions that I've been asked a number of times that I'd like to clarify with you and then state some of these concerns. So the first thing is that the, the notice says that there is a provision that registered voters residing in the proposed SSA would have to, fifty-one percent would have to say they don't sign a petition saying that they wanted, in order for this to pass. As I understand it, there are no residential, there is no residential property there and there's no registered voters who live there. So is that provision taken out?
That, that is correct. That's, that's just a statutory requirement under the state law for these. So since there are no registered voters living within the area, they would not be, you know, you know, not, not objecting to the proposal.
Great, thank you. And then the, of the property owners, it's a bit unclear and, you know, I, I understand there's this, always this balance between simplicity and equity whenever you try to do one of these things. So, you know, the comments were, gee, I own a really big lot like Rubicon. How many votes do I get? And I think the answer is one. So as I, as I read it, I think you're saying that anyone who pays a property tax bill and has a, has a pin, then they, then they get to have a say in, in this, in this SSA. But it's just one per property tax bill, one per pin. Is that correct?
Generally, yes, that's, that's correct, yes.
Okay. And then the, on the, on the plan that was attached to that, it shows the detention lots as well. Are those included or not included?
No, those, those are, since those are common areas, those really aren't included in, in the, any vote total that would happen.
Great, okay. So basically, if you get a property tax bill and you pay the property tax bill every year, you get a say in this?
Essentially, correct, right.
Okay, great, thank you. So then the other questions I've been, been questioned about is have there been any problems to date with maintenance of these areas?
Not that we are aware of. I mean, we've, we've had, I think we had some mowing issues a few years ago, but that's, you know, been resolved long since we've, we fixed all that, so.
Any complaints from neighbors or anyone else?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Any code enforcement actions?
Not, not recent, no.
So again, forgive me if I'm speaking bluntly, but why do we need this?
Well, this is required as part of the original plan development. So, and this was, you know, what we had originally intended to have in place. And if, if it weren't for, you know, an issue that we had with getting the documents recorded in a timely manner, this would already have been in place. But I think, I think the key takeaway is that, you know, this does not impose any tax on the property owners. It's only if the Owners Association doesn't maintain the common areas that, you know, the city would have the right to activate the special service area if we elect to maintain that area.
Yes, I, I just kinda, I agree with you on all points. But from everyone else's opinion, who wasn't around when the, when the plans were originally, you know, proposed and built, they don't know that. And in the, in the special service area letter, it doesn't say anything about the triggers that would, would cause the tax to be, be, you know, distributed to the property owners. That's, that's the big deal.
Okay.
If people think they're gonna get taxed, then they're not in favor of it. And, and actually, just my own personal opinion is, you know, we have an association that is on record, but it hasn't been set up yet. But there is provision so that every time a property changes, changes hands, now they have to join the association. So in the last year, the building at fifteen fifty Beach and the building now at one fifty-five Oswald have both been sold. And so now that's, that's, you know, more folks that have to join the association to help pay for the improvements that we're talking, or the updated maintenance of the, of these things. And actually, this might help the other eight property owners decide to join the association. Because if the association is functioning well, you don't implement the tax. If the association isn't functioning so well, well then, there's another way to make sure that the bonds are maintained. So I, I actually think it's, it's got some real benefit to it. But there is one more negative that I've heard a number of times, and so I wanted to mention that as well. And, and that is that, you know, anytime you talk about raising property taxes, that makes selling property more difficult. This, this park, after this SSA is in place, will be less competitive than other parks that don't have this tax. And so the building owners and, and other property owners are concerned that, that this may put them at a bit of a, of a competitive disadvantage with other land and other property in Potavion and King County.
There would be no tax levied on it. It's just a dormant SSA. And as the number states, we have over fifty of them throughout the city and we have very few that have ever been activated. So that's the whole reason to have this is if the partnership that is, you know, taking care of it today, whatever that may be, ten years from now, that might not be the same makeup. And that's the protection for the city and the surrounding residents to be able to have a mechanism in place to take care of that property if the next ten owners is, you know, that transfers or that gets built out don't want to do that and don't want to take care of it, this is how it gets taken care of. And that would have already been on there had this been recorded when it was originally done. So that really has always been there, or at least the thought of that has always been there for anybody that's either bought or sold property in that, that development.
Again, I agree with you on all points.
Right.
And that, actually, that's all the comments I had, so thank you for your time.
And, and one more thing just to follow up is that, you know, even if we were in the situation where we had to activate the special service area, that doesn't mean that it has to be activated forever. You know, the city really doesn't want to be in the business of maintaining more basins than it has to. So, you know, if the property owners after, if, if we activate a levy and, and then the next year, the property owners say, hey, wait a minute, this is, makes no sense, we'd rather do this ourselves. You know, they can certainly take that on and then we can, you know, terminate the levy. And that's, that's certainly an option.
If I could ask, Scott, I think it would be very, very helpful to send that notice or publish something, some letter that says that so that they calm down a bit about, about their property taxes being raised. That, that would go a long way, I think, to getting rid of some of the angst. And also, I think the point about if it's properly maintained would probably help me to get more folks to agree to join the association and be able to better manage.
And I think that would be in your best interests as an owner there to be able to convince the other property owners there that they need to be part of the association to take care of it. And then it doesn't become a tax on everybody. It's just a payment that they make to take care of the area that's next to their building.
I couldn't agree more. Thanks so much for your time.
Yep, thank you. Does anybody on the council have any comments or anybody online have any comments about this? I don't think we had, did we have anybody show up or come up online?
No.
So then I think, I don't know if we need a motion to close the public hearing or if we just close the public hearing?
Motion.
A motion to close the public hearing, please? I guess I move to close the public hearing. And then second by Baron. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Agassi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron, absent. Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly, absent. Chanet, absent. And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried eleven to zero.
Alright, thank you. And now that's, that that's over, Scott, could you send out a copy of the letter that gets mailed out for that SSA notice so that we could look at that? And then maybe offer a couple of suggestions about how we could add some wording to that to address some of these things so that when it gets to people, they know that this is a mechanism for the city to have basically in their back pocket to be able to take care of the property that they should, the property owners should be taking care of.
Yeah, absolutely, we can send that to you.
Okay, because I think that that might just make it a little bit easier and again, make it much more understandable for, you know, the general population that has never dealt with an SSA before to understand what the realities of that is.
Right, sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. And that'll be on our next city council meeting if you wanted to. And that'll be on our next city council meeting if you wanted to go with that. All right, Peggy, you're back up. Item seven, resume discussion.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't even look at the agenda again. I didn't realize something had been added. I thought it was only budget or I would have paused sooner so that he didn't have to wait. Just for general information, we only levy for two SSAs. One is SSA thirty and totally drawing a blank on the name of the subdivision now. You know what that is, Gary?
Is it the south?
Is it Prairie Trail South?
Southeast?
Yeah. I think it's Prairie Trail South. And then the other one is the downtown SSA for Main Street. So those are the only two SSAs that we levy for. Years ago, we had a levy for the parking garage. But other than that, we haven't, we don't generally levy for SSAs. Unless it becomes necessary. We have some music playing.
My daughter's praxis being, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's, it's nice. It's soothing. Okay, so I wasn't going to go over the individual departments at this time because I wanted to give everyone a chance to go through it. If anybody has questions at this time on individual budget items. Highlights, we only have the one position for GIS that is included in this budget as proposed to fill. Otherwise, there really are no things that jump out in the general fund budget as being vastly different than twenty twenty-one.
I did see we already have questions and answers back already on several things. But just for anybody that's watching this, that's on the website and it will be updated as we get more sections of questions and answers that come out. Those get attached to the, the budget page.
Right, I, I did send out those question and answers to the city council tonight. I was, I didn't post it on the website yet because I was trying to figure out where the most logical place would be to put that. Because this is ClearGov's link. So I don't know if it would make sense. I think we'll probably try and find a way to put it right in with this document. So that.
Maybe on the front page of this, put it in there.
Right.
If it's a link to get to it.
We have control over what we want to display, so that might make the most sense where we'll put them. But they will definitely be available tomorrow.
Learn to use whatever it can do for us, too. I think this is kind of cool to be experimenting with new setup with this.
Right.
Mark, do you have your hand up again?
I do. Since we're talking about that GIS position, I'm just assuming that this is a good time to address that. And my question is more for Gary and Howard is, so I, I saw the response and, and totally understand where, where we're coming from on that response. What are the possibilities of, as we have all these future projects that are doing water main replacements and, and, and all the things that are changing or identifying things that are, that should be in the GIS map, what is the possibility of adding that to the project of those, of those projects? So as part of a project cost, rather than having to have higher employees to do all the work that, I'm assuming those contractors have exact coordinates because that's part of what they have to do is, is, is map that out. So I'm just trying to find more creative ways to do this than increasing salary and pension and, and healthcare, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So if I, this is Howard, just, so I understand you're looking to add, be creative adding GIS services to projects that are coming up. I think that we can look at that option, but we still have a lot of backlog work that needs to be accomplished. We've been doing GIS here in the city for probably about sixteen years. We still don't have a lot of the assets in the system. And they change from day in and day out, so you're not going to really have a consultant who's going to work on one asset or another asset and have individual, let's say, replacements. You're not, you're going to have employees doing that. And in that case, you're going to need somebody to help, help with, with adding, updating GIS assets. And, and GIS also feeds some of the other systems in town or in our, our communities, such as Viewworks is a big one. And a lot of our Viewworks work orders can't be completed properly. Our conditions and evaluations have not been able to be implemented because we don't have all those assets in the system right now. So I mean, we have a lot of catching up to do before we would even, I'd say, get to that point. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I appreciate, yeah, no, thanks, Howard. I appreciate that. I guess what I'm looking, what's, what's the inventory of backlog we have? Can we hire a designer or again, you know, somebody to, to quote out what that's going to cost and how long that's going to take? I, I know it was in the answer that there's, you know, an estimate. But, you know, again, and for everybody, I'm always going to be looking at, you know, any position we add, you know, costs the city, you know, if we hire a twenty-five-year-old kid, it's, it's going to cost the city money for sixty, seventy years at this point. And it's not just for the, you know, the time the person's employed. We have, we have obligations beyond that. So I'm just trying to find, I'm going to ask this every year, trying to find creative ways to not spend more money, just like we all do in our household budgets. So I, this coming right at budget time is, is hard for me because I don't have very little time to react. I have to be able to say yes or no within, within a few weeks of being presented this information rather than having this information several months ago and saying, man, you know, some of this may be, it's not a flat-out no, it may be a not now, or it may be, let's find other ways to, to solve this problem.
You know, I, I see a consultant as being somebody who's either doing some type of generic work where we've had people in the field GPSing and inventorying our stormwater this current year. Or I see somebody as a specialty, something that's a very high-level consultant that comes in to provide their expertise. And I don't know if that's completely all that we're looking for. I mean, we're looking for somebody to help our one person in GIS and, and something that's going to be day in and day out to take on projects as they change and as new requests come in. So I, again, I think it would cost the city more money to try and bring in a consultant to do the things that we need done to help mostly public works, which is of course why it's being funded by some of the utilities.
Yeah, if I can jump in too, this is a lot more than just map creation. I mean, map creation is one part of it, and that's data gathering in the field so you can locate all the assets and then get the assets into a map. And in theory, that'd be great if all we had to do is create the map once and the map always served us forevermore. But the reality is that every time you go out and you do an excavation, or every time there's a new development, or there's a new infrastructure project, we discover new things or things change. Or, you know, there's new, new, new infrastructure that goes in the ground. So these maps are essentially a living and breathing thing that are always changing. And these maps are really how you manage hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure. And it's really what we're talking about. All your water mains, all your sanitary sewer, all your electric system, it's all mapped and kept track of and valued. And all the assets are, you know, in theory, you should be able to have all the information on the assets into what we're trying to do into a modern system. I'm still doing service requests on paper. And my guys take a piece of paper out in the field and write on it because we don't have accurate or complete maps. So I mean, this is, as Howard said, I know GIS pre-existed me and I joined here in two thousand and eight. We've been working on Viewworks since two thousand and fourteen. You know, again, we're still kind of in this position where our water map is really the only map that I would consider to be complete. And that's been in maintenance mode now for several years. Stormwater map, sanitary collection, and electric are all definitely in the incomplete category where we know there's things on there that are missing or inaccurate and, and need to be, you know, need to be updated and revised. So this is way more than just map creation. This is overall management of the infrastructure system, you know, through the GIS.
Yeah, so I agree. I, I'm not, I want to make sure everybody understands that I'm not saying, no, we should not fix this problem. I look at this, the catch-up as a temporary thing. I'd like to see what are the options? And if we, every time we put out a bid for a project that's going to be excavating and putting something new in to say, part of the project is update, helping us update our GIS. It just, adding permanent people is, is a forever challenge for us from a budgeting standpoint. And that's, that's, those are the, those are the areas we have a chance to say, this is where we can avoid spending money and, again, healthcare and pensions, et cetera, moving forward. I'm not saying no to, I don't care where all of these, you know, assets lie. I'm saying I, personally, I, I wouldn't, I will, on that particular point, I'm, I'm not a yes vote on adding to staff. I'd like to find a way to solve this problem in a different way. I'm not saying it's not going to be more expensive maybe in the short run to say, hey, you know what? Over the next five to ten years, it's going to cost us five hundred thousand dollars to do this. But ten years from now, when we're all caught up, it doesn't, it's not a continuing cost for us. And that's, that's my, that's my challenge with the, this line item right now.
And I think, Mark, if I can sort of summarize what Gary and Howard have been saying is this is not anticipated to be a short-term catch-up that we need. This is, my understanding, there were two employees doing GIS prior to the recession. And since then, we have continued to fall further and further behind trying to do without the position. So we, we've conducted the experiment of can we try to use contractors in order to get ourselves caught up? And we find ourselves answering that question, no, we can't. And that this work is very critical to helping us to manage our infrastructure. It's so aligned with what we do on a day-to-day basis that it really does make sense for it to be done by a city of Batavia employee as opposed to who a contractor might assign from time to time to different projects that we have going on. We, we've thought about it long and hard, and we do not come to city council requesting additional positions without certainty that the future work exists for this to be a full-time position.
I, I guess I understand that, but again, this is the first time reading this budget that I've been aware in the past four and a half years that this is a massive deficit for us. And I've, I've seen stuff that, and, and the work that's been done by Mike has been excellent. You know, he's added a lot of value and that's, that's awesome and the GIS work is, is fantastic. But then if I look at effort that is being spent on other projects, like mapping out where the Bulldogs are, cool, that's an awesome thing that we did. Is that a priority in, in our efforts? Or is that something he could have been working on that backlog? I'm more interested in understanding the backlog and how long it would take to get to the backlog. I, I don't know if any of our projects have any line items that say that the, all the water mains we just, or all the sewer separation thing, did those, were those projects, was there GIS information requested out of those projects? My fault for not asking this in the past, but I didn't know that this was such a, a need that we needed to hire somebody for this. So I think that that's something that I'd be more interested in seeing in the future is adding this incremental cost to our projects to say, this is something that's going to make sure that we future-proof ourself on these things. And then Mike works on the backlog or again, hiring a temp to help with the backlog. I ironically have an intern working for me this year that is looking to get their masters in GIS. They, they want nothing to do necessarily with the grocery industry. They see in the, in that burgeoning field that there's interns and there's people out there that can help with this as well. So that's, that's my position. We don't need to necessarily go back and forth on this anymore.
I can hope to clarify some of those items. If we have a large project like the storms, or storm sewer separation project or Prairie Commons, a private development, or Warren Washington Place, ASBILTS are required. And the ASBILTS are required in electronic format so that we do and can put that information into GIS. That's been a standard in the city as long as I've been here. Do we have the people on our end to take those drawings and get them into GIS? That's always the struggle is having someone on our end to take what our consultant or our contractors give us and then actually get it into our GIS system. So that's, that's one item. Again, this is not a finite problem. This is an ongoing management tool of our, of our, of our infrastructure. If, if we're done one day, I would be extremely happy. My job would be finished. We'd have all the roads and water mains and electric all finished and we'd never have to worry about them again. It just doesn't work that way. It's, it's always a constant, a new project. Yeah, maintain it when things are taken out and put in. And then the other, Mark, I remember your, your last question was, one of them was the contractor and then you also had one more and I, I lost my train of thought as I was talking there.
That's, I'm just letting you know my position right now. Yeah, actually, I'm not sure which question I, which, but I think one of the points again is, if the contractors are out there and they're getting all the information and it's like, yeah, that's, we can't get it into the system, that's another line item to give them access to our system to add that, those data points into it. This is not, I know people that work in federal government that that's, that's a thing. This is, you know, it, it's not, we're not unique by asking that question to say, you have all the information, please enter it into our system and make that a line item in the budget of the project.
I understand what you're asking, but that's also a quality control issue. You have different people all the time entering information into a system. The last thing that you had mentioned was contractors and field collection. This year, we had a contractor in doing storm sewer collection. Based on the amount of work they did this summer, I would say there's probably a good half a dozen to another decade of, of summers that they could do if they do things at the same pace of data collection. And that just gives you a scale of how much is still out there just on the storm sewer side.
So I, I actually gave Peggy a map to show what is, what, what actually got done with storm water this year. Okay, so that, that was roughly ten to fifteen percent and cost the city about fifty thousand dollars. Now, even though we have a consultant out there gathering this information, we still have to internally prepare a worksheet or a form so they know what information to collect. When the data comes back, now Mike is spending multiple days going through it and doing quality control. We have tried interns. In fact, we have an intern working for us now doing some water work. But what an intern can bring and what a full-time employee can bring are two different things. And having an intern here, that takes Mike's time away from doing projects because he's also managing the intern. So having a seasoned professional here who's got some experience. Um, so having a seasoned professional here who's got some experience. Um, they're able to do a lot more work, um, than, than a couple of interns.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Now, Peggy, do you have any more for us tonight? Or are we just gonna wait till the levy tomorrow and then? The next round of questions at the next meeting?
Yes, I don't have anything else that I needed to touch on tonight. Just if there are any other questions. By anyone.
And then we'll go through the levies tomorrow night. And that other information that you were gonna get for us so that we can have an idea if we did decide to start. Slowly increasing incrementally bringing that up so that way we'd be able to pay for those other items that we've talked about time and time again. Without having to have a large increase. Or without having to go out and bond out for money to, to do those at one time.
Okay, yes. Um. Under personnel changes here, I did talk about, uh, the past positions. We try not to ask for staff. Uh, or to expand staff. So, uh. Since the recession, uh, we've only added. Two public service maintenance workers, a police officer, a building inspector. And then the information systems technician. Uh, and the economic development manager was not. It was not a new position, but it was a new employee because it was a contracted position before, but it was a. Permanent contract with just us. So that was really just a shift from. How that employee was paid. But we, we do not ask for staff lightly. We understand the long-term impact of that. I would like to have a new person. But I don't ask every year because I know how important it is to control our costs. But someday I'll retire and you will have to probably hire somebody. Before then. Before then, but really just. It's unbelievable the number of hours that Peggy puts into, uh, creating. This budget and it would be so helpful for their department to have, um, an individual who could. Do some of the, um, analysis work that could assist in the preparation of the budget.
Well, I'm glad that we got to the new software for this stuff and I'm really glad at the way it turned out so far, you know, what we've done with it. Or what you've done with it, your department's done with it. Cause I think that that is. To me, a, a real benefit moving forward. I mean, again, I think back to when I started here almost twenty years ago. That, you know, we were in a budget where we happened to go through at government services meetings where we went through every line item on it. And I don't think anybody really understood all of it or the big picture overview of it wasn't no, nowhere near as good as it is. Today, when you wanna look at funds, what they're, you know, what they're being used for, what the balances are in them. How they're being divvied up each year, where they came from revenue-wise. All that to me is so much easier to find today than it was ten years ago or twenty years ago.
Say twenty-one.
Okay.
This is my twenty-first budget. But yes, it has changed a lot. Um, we've implemented a lot of funding policies since I've been here. Uh, the funding of, uh. Public Works vehicles and fire apparatus, that was new just back, I think in two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve, we started. Incrementally funding, uh, adding to that because it was initially started with, uh, developer permit fees. Um, but as we, you know, as that eased up, it wasn't sufficient. So. We started setting that aside and building capital because. We do have a lot of work in these buildings, these old buildings that we can incrementally set funds aside so that it doesn't hit all at once.
Well, I think that's something that we have to really think about. Or, you know, all the unfunded capital projects that we've talked about in the last couple of years. And really focused on the last year, that, that is something we have to. Think about when we look at what we levy and what we tax for and how we come up with that money. And not have to wait till, okay, we have to do this now. And then you're gonna get, you know, a lot more backlash, I think, from the public if we wait and do it that way. Than if we start to make progress towards that or make enough progress that we put away a certain amount of money. And then when we get to that point, we can spend that on what we wanna do. And eat away at some of those projects.
Right. You, you could possibly fund some of those projects with cash rather than having to borrow. Right.
And then that, in the end, ends up costing the public less on top of it.
Absolutely. Yeah. Although the cost to borrow right now is very low.
I know. Be nice to be able to go out and do everything. Yeah, eventually that's gonna change. And I think that's why we have to be in the situation. Where we're not also paying off bonds and trying to come up with money to do projects.
Yes.
That's a bad place to be.
Right.
Okay, does anybody online have any more questions? Are we done with our budget discussion for this evening? I hear crickets, so I think we're good.
Okay, so the next, um, budget meeting will be our public hearing for the, the, uh. Budget, which will be on, uh, next Tuesday, the sixteenth.
The sixteenth. Okay.
But feel free to send any questions to Laura or myself and we'll make sure that we, uh, get the answers to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now as number eight, project status.
Sure. Um, update on a couple of things. Um, tomorrow night, we'll have another discussion on the, um. Options for the dam removal, uh, following the Park District's discussion and where things ended up there. Um, and then I also wanted to let everyone know that met with. Uh, Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce today to, uh, begin discussions on. Um, ideas to how to support our business community during the One Washington Place project. Um, got ideas on the various parts that we want to put into, you know, I, I'll think of a more clever title than construction guide. Um, but, but some type of reference that people can have all of the information in one place. We wanted to come up with a draft of that. And then bring the business owners together, um, for a meeting, an opportunity, not just like, you know, a one-way presentation. But something interactive and offer them opportunities to form committees to work on certain aspects. Associated with this. Perhaps one committee could work on ideas for. Um, programs that we could have in order to support them during this. Perhaps another one would, another group could come together and talk about ideas for signage to direct. Customers to their businesses during construction. Um, throughout, uh, this process, one of the things Shodin has said is there'll be a skin on the outside of that construction fence. And that might offer a nice tableau that we can utilize to make sure that passersby know. That the businesses on North River Street are still open and that we should all be making a special effort. To support those businesses throughout this important construction project. The result of which we hope will be, you know, that rising tide that raises all ships. But it's important for our community to come together in support of these businesses while construction is going on. So we make sure that everyone's there to enjoy the positive things that we hope will result from this project.
I think we learned a lot of things during COVID.
Yes.
Especially during the beginning and middle of that first year of it. On how we can adapt, you know, our business community can adapt, our public adapted to it. How we can make things work in weird situations and, and places we didn't think we were gonna be or ways we didn't think we'd have to operate. So I think that's something too, that those businesses know what worked for them during that time. They know what they think they can use. During construction period. And I think we have to be, as a city, have to be one that really helps facilitate that. And if that means we have to pay for a big giant banner down Wilson Street. That, you know, explains that or changes on a monthly basis, whatever it is. I think that's something we have to be committed to be able to do. To make sure that we provide any help we can, just like we allow businesses to move out into the street and everything else. During COVID, I think we need to be really flexible about what we allow them to do during that construction period, especially. In what I'll say is the off-seasons of their businesses. You know, during prime season in the summer and stuff, I think we can really adapt to that. Cause there's more room to do that. But during the winter and, you know, those seasons that, that aren't really that great for their businesses to begin with. That's where we're really gonna have to put attention.
Right.
So I'm glad to hear that, that's all started.
Yep. All kicked off and, uh, we plan to bring the business owners together. We're gonna, uh, come up with that draft of this document. Um, in November and December, and we wanna meet right after the first of the year with the businesses to get all of that rolling.
Has the garbage been resolved? I know that was one of the concerns that they talked about last year was the garbage.
Yes, we reached out to all of those businesses to, um, and invited them to, uh, Anthony was. Gonna meet on-site with them. Um, some have not responded. Others have said that they were not interested in doing that. So we, we don't have a lot of, uh, participation. In that at this point. So we're continuing to try to work with the businesses. I think, you know, that their current locations for where they store their garbage are going to be eliminated during the. Um, construction process. And so, um. Some alternative needs to be, and we've offered our help. So I'm hoping that. They'll come on board and we can devise a solution that will, uh, help everyone.
And maybe if I could make a recommendation, maybe that could be one of the committees. Group could work on. I think that's something that we just need to continue to. Really address with the community members, cause that was a big thorn when you had that online meeting with them very early on. So I'm very surprised that they're not giving that feedback.
Yeah, I was too.
Because that is something that is vitally important because we don't want it to spill over into our public areas.
Right.
So I think that's something that needs to be addressed and continue to be addressed. Along with where the workers are going to be parking. I think it's gonna be important that. We don't impede on where the customers potentially be parking.
Right.
And construction guys are used to walk.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So, you know.
Mm-hmm. Um, we have issued a temporary certificate of occupancy for the Comedy Vault at eighteen East Wilson Street. The connection of the sprinkler system to the city's water main, as well as completion of the lower level are still pending, but. The, uh, they're doing fire watch while they have shows right now. I think that the connection may have just been completed today, Gary. Is that correct? Okay, very good. We're working with, um, the contractors who are doing the water main connection for the new Boca Ditos location. At eleven North Batavia Avenue. Um, it just, we've had several issues that have come up with this. And we continue to work with them on, now they have run into a, a foundation. That exists that's underneath the road. So, um, we may have to, at this late juncture in the season. Allow them to open cut, but it's, it's very, uh. Precarious because the, um, asphalt plants are only open. For a very, very short time at this point. And we cannot have. Construction. Plates over the roadway. When we have to do winter operations. So we're working very closely with the. Um, business owners and their contractors to try to get that resolved. But if they are unable to do the work, that would delay their opening until next spring. So we're. Trying to do everything on our side possible to get this done. Um, the bar one on, uh. That's a company that's located on Pearson Drive. As well as the spec industrial building on Louis Bork Drive are still under construction. Um. We have, uh, we're, we're also conducting interviews for the open building inspector. Position that we have with the announcement that, um, Toby Petrie, our longtime building inspector is retiring. Um, the committee of the whole on November ninth, we would consider a number of items, including a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for properties. Owned by the Batavia Park District at one eleven and one fifteen South River Street. Approval of a plat of subdivision for the Randall Mill Center, the old TGI Fridays at Randall Road and Mill Street. An ordinance proposing establishment of SSA sixty-eight, a backup for the Avenue Marketplace development. Assigned grant for Haley Bee's Bakery at one oh nine East Wilson Street. Amendments to the land cash ordinance, ordinance proposing establishment of SSA forty-two for the Nagel Industrial Park Development. And discussion to authorize staff to begin negotiation of an annexation agreement for the Thompson Farm property at Fabian Parkway and Wenmuth Road. So. There's just a ton of activity there in, uh, community and economic development. And in Public Works. Um, crews will be working this week on repairs to the water service line on Houston Street. And we've also begun work on the roof repairs at the Public Works Building. Portion of the original metal roof have to be removed and replaced and new gutters. Installed. And we anticipate that the engineering plans for the North River Street one-way conversion. Will be submitted to IDOT here in the, uh, next coming weeks. And, uh, we'll remove the existing road closure after the Thanksgiving holiday this year. At some point, uh, we'll bring a discussion back to city council about what, um, changes you may want to make for, uh. To the outdoor dining experience, um, for next year. Uh, anticipating that that roadway will likely be, uh, the one-way conversion will be completed by Memorial Day weekend. Um, in the police departments, police department command staff are participating in body worn camera program management training that's being hosted at. Uh, by Elgin Community College and, um, our police department members are observing fall school safety drills beginning this week. And the command staff members recently participated in a countywide Starcom radio network interoperability work group. For the purpose of enhancing cohesive command, control and communications during large-scale mutual aid and response. Uh, throughout King County. And that's what I have. Unless anybody has any questions for me.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Laura tonight? Anybody online? Okay, didn't see any hands. Does anybody have any others for this evening?
Two.
Again, go ahead.
Um, so our Batavia High School has five girls that will be representing. The Batavia High School at the swim, the girls swim state finals on Friday. There is going to be a relay team made up of. Um, Hemi Mayo, Ashley Seago, Sarah Michael and Kelly Shortall, who's my daughter. Um, Ashley Seago will be swimming the two hundred IM and the two hundred breast. And Ashley is a four-time state representative. This is her fourth year as a senior. Um, and then we, um, have a swimmer that goes to Geneva High School that'll be swimming the two hundred three. Um, this past weekend, the girls took second place at their sectional and this was the first time. Since, I think it was twenty-one years that the girls have beat Saint Charles. So they took second. Um, so it's very exciting. They'll be leaving on Friday. With prelims beginning at three P M.
Exciting. I saw that you posted the stuff about them winning. That was good to see after the other disaster weekend that we had with the high school sports.
No, that was a nice part of it.
Really, really good, good luck to them and hope they do really well.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't realize Geneva was part of that too. I thought it was just the Wild Dogs.
No, it's West Chicago, Geneva and, um, Batavia. And ten girls went to sectionals and seven of them were from Batavia. One from Geneva and two from West Chicago. And the girls did an absolutely amazing jobs, all of them. Except for one who has a fractured ankle. But she is the one from Geneva going to state in the two hundred three. Um, yeah, best times.
Cool. Again, good luck to them and hopefully we get them back here if they win something.
Yeah. Celebrate their victory.
Yeah. Okay, if there are no others. I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by itself, a second by Baron. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, go rest up, cause tomorrow night's gonna be a long night. It'll be like last.